School Publications Code and Revision of Administrative Regulation 5145.2, Freedom of Speech/Expression. Dr. Service?
Yes, Barbara Kiani, our Administrative Services and Communications. I was going to have her introduce us, but I was just talking to her. And we'll just have Craig Price come up to the podium. Craig is legal counsel. If we establish a new policy, we want to make sure that we get it right.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Price.
To start off, just by way of background, when my office was asked some questions about free speech and student publications, one of the things that we noticed in going through the existing board policy was that there was no publication code as such. And as I know all of you know, because I'm sure you've looked at it, California is fortunate enough to have what I think is the most progressive free speech allowable statute in the United States. Under federal law, which controls in most jurisdictions, there is provision that allows a great many more restrictions than that which is allowed in California. And actually, our law here goes back to, in the neighborhood of 1970, I think, and there have been some changes. So there are fundamentally important protections that are provided in Ed Code 48907. One of the things that's in that section, however, is that the governing board of every school district is supposed to adopt rules and regulations in the form of a written publications code. So in noting that, we tasked ourselves with trying to devise a new board policy that would meet that requirement and that would fall below the thresholds that are in 48907 publication protections. Meaning, we looked at what those protections are in the statute. We looked at the key cases that have come down from the appellate courts, particularly the Leib case, the Lopez case, where different issues have arisen. The Nevada case, which was a big one a couple of years ago. And we use those cases as a guide to fill in some of the blanks. I mean, I'll just give you one example. 48907 talks about libel and slander, and I think it talks about obscenity. We put in profanity as well. We put that in because in one of these two cases, it was actually, I think it was in the Lopez case, that court stated that having a regulation or a publications code that incorporated a standard against profanity was something that was allowable under 48907. So the long and the short of it is that what we did was not to attempt to bring you something that was at a place where you would be expected to simply adopt it, but to have a draft of something that would meet the requirements in 48907, that would provide standards that are consistent with that law, and then to engage you in a discussion with respect to where you wanted to take it. And to the extent you want to take it anywhere, it would be back away from some of the things that are included in the draft policy, not to add to it. Because we've basically laid something out that parallels what both the statutory and the case law allow. It's up to the board to decide, of course, in the particular categories that are in this board policy, what it wishes to see. So specifically, there is provision for limited prior restraint, and that is only, as 48907 says, when the law itself, that statute, is run afoul of. But it's up to the board to decide in what circumstances it wishes to provide for a prior restraint. The draft policy provides suggested language for what the role of the faculty advisor, the journalism advisor, might look like in order to provide some guidance so that staff would have some understanding for what's expected. You may wish to revise that to substantially delete it altogether. That is something that's in your discretion. And in the description of, I think there are eight items that list the things that are not included as free expression, it's really up to you if you wish to delete things that are not explicitly covered by 48907. But I will give you just one example of why something, and I, actually, I can tell you that in each of those eight categories where the language did not come from 48907, it came from the appellate cases. And so by having that in a policy, if you wish to have it there, it provides guidance that wouldn't otherwise be available for those who have occasion to make reference to the policy, whether they're the students, or the faculty advisor, or the principal, or the board. But it's up to you whether you want to have it. But number eight was something that I had recommended be included as an item for discussion to bring to the attention of the board, because it really raises what I think is a wonderful example of certain rights being pitted directly against other, more or less equally fundamental rights. So under number eight, there is an expression of the fact that there is no allowance for publication of material that would cross the line and infringe upon categories of fundamental protections that students have in terms of their ethnicity, their sexuality, those kinds of things. And a school district under the Civil Rights Act, Title VI of the Civil Rights Act, has the absolute obligation to protect students from activities that would discriminate against students or would harass students based upon those categories. And the description of those categories in number eight is actually listed from Title VI of the Civil Rights Act. So the question, of course, comes up, in theory, and you haven't had this, and you have no reason to expect why you would, but in discussing this issue, which is what makes it so fascinating, one has to consider, well, what happens if somebody decides they want to write an op-ed styled piece that would go so far as to label someone in a very derogatory fashion, having to do with their gender, or perceived gender, or their ethnicity, in a way that would violate the protections that federal civil rights law gives them? In that situation, you have the freedom of speech that's guaranteed under 48907 that, to a certain extent, if not directly, is pitted against the basic rights that students have to be protected against certain things with the coincidental obligation that the district has to take steps to protect students from those things. So I had the easy job, really, which was to develop something that would be a forum for discussion for you. And now you, with input from the folks that are here tonight, whether it be tonight, or I'm guessing probably at a later meeting, because there's quite a bit to talk about, can weigh in on that. So I'm happy to, you know, try and answer any questions that you might have. And back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Price. I think we probably would like to take public comment before we go to discussion of the board. I will. Okay. At this time, we have two members of the public, is it two? Okay. Who would like, who have submitted speaker forms to speak on this item. Are there any other speaker, any other members who would like to speak? You should submit your forms at this time, because we are going to close the comment, the speaker slips. So is anybody else interested in? Nope, just these two? Okay. So we'll declare the speaker slips closed, and we'll have our speakers.
We have Tony Sandrich, followed by Stephanie Thornton.
Thornton. Good evening. Thank you for having me here. I'm a Santa Barbara High School teacher, the journalism advisor. And I would point out, we did an article in our paper in English and in Spanish, because we have a page on our Spanish, it's in Spanish, with Ms. Limon when she got elected, as a Don, a graduate. And our paper is run by very qualified students. And what happened was, we wrote an article, I mean, you know this, maybe you don't, we wrote an article that dealt with sex and high school students, at a school where we have two childcare centers where our students can bring their kids to school. And this is a tricky thing. And this goes directly to First Amendment rights for the students to express their issues. And I have to tell you, the students in our school read that column. They may not read every column that's in our paper. And prior restraint is very scary for student journalists. You know that democracy and prior restraint don't necessarily fit together very well. And the idea that a student newspaper is supposed to submit them, one, it's certainly saying to the students that you are ready to be judged by the authorities. And I'm not saying that's what you're trying to do here, but bringing up the possibility of prior restraint is definitely challenging. And the same with a teacher advisor. Are you suggesting that the teacher advisor can't make good decisions, and that school board members know what student newspapers should publish? Now, the article that we published was written by a student, in no way caused a riot at our school. As a matter of fact, it was titillating, I guess, or scary to some people to hear a student talk openly about their sexual behavior in high school. That's the reality of high school students today. And so to confront those issues, as well as the many other issues our paper has confronted, seems to me to be important. So I guess what I'm saying is, prior restraint seems very scary to me, that we're supposed to check with authorities before we publish things. We publish things that were not exactly flattering towards things that were happening in our school. I would guess if I had to submit that to the principal, he would suggest that we not publish those articles. As a matter of fact, the superintendent might not want those articles published, because they were not flattering to the school district as a whole. But freedom of the press in America? So I guess I have a couple of quotes for you. "A free press can be good or bad, most certainly without freedom. A press will never be anything but bad." That's Camus. This is another quote. "We're not afraid to entrust the American people with unpleasant facts, foreign ideas, alien philosophies, and competitive values. For a nation that is afraid to let its people judge the truth and falsehood in an open market is a nation that's afraid of its people." John Kennedy said that, and that's what it sounds like. You don't trust-
You've got 20 seconds.
-the students at Santa Barbara High School to be responsible. And actually, we could have many of our students here to talk tonight, but Stephanie Thornton, who is our lead editor, will come up here and talk. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm Stephanie Thornton. I'm currently a senior at Santa Barbara High School and one of the editors on The Forge. I'm here as representative of our entire editorial team, which decides with the assistance of our teacher advisor what to publish in each of our issues. My experience on The Forge this year has been an empowering one, largely because of the responsibilities associated with choosing and preparing the topics to cover as a student group. The new guidelines for student publications being presented tonight, which would increase the censorship powers of the district, limit these responsibilities, and would thus impinge on our rights as student journalists. Investigative and journalistic student reporters have long presented difficulties for school administrations, as they are willing to take on challenging subjects of relevance to their readers, but often of discomfort to their principals. As we wrote in a message from the staff in our February 25 issue concerning our publishing of sensitive topics, "The Forge is here to serve as an honest reflection of the students and adults of the Santa Barbara High community, and to examine the topics that relate to us, topics that will not always please everyone, as they may cause us to be more open than we like to be." Student newspapers are relevant to high school students because they are run by the students, not by the administration. We already have newsletters that come from the principal's office and the district office, and allowing our paper to become another one of those would alienate the very audience we try the hardest to reach, our students. Weakening the students' ability to determine what or what not to publish weakens the entire district's efforts to encourage active participation and have honest and open discussions. These new guidelines send a message to students in local schools, a message that our voices will not be heard unless they conform to what administrators want to hear. As I believe we can all agree on, communities in which members feel their voices are not heard are often communities full of apathetic and disengaged members, something I sincerely hope the school board doesn't want our local schools to become. As Paul McMasters of the First Amendment Center states in his study on free speech in schools, "If the restrictions we impose are too harsh, we undermine student commitment to rights fundamental to democracy and essential to individual achievement." To close, I would like you to please keep in mind that your decision on this issue is being watched by the students of Santa Barbara as a lesson on our constitutional rights and responsibilities as citizens of the United States of America.
Thank you. Ms. Thornton, before you leave the podium, because we're, Mr. Price pointed out that we can delete things out of this if we'd like. Can you tell me which items in the policy you feel infringe on the free speech?
Yeah, in the prior restraint, prior restraint. If after consultation with student editors and staff, the journalism advisor and school principal make an objectively random determination, rational determination in good faith that materially draft this part, that it would be deleted before publication, that things can be taken out before we go to press.
Okay. And so even though it's in consultation with the student editors and the advisor, and there's a decision made on the part by those folks that it seems to violate the law, you think it's a violation of free speech?
So if the students disagreed, nothing would be deleted?
I mean, that would be part of the discussion, I imagine, but so, okay, so, let's say the, okay, so that's, and we can come back to that. So that's one area. Is there any other part that you think?
I mean, I suppose it's just in how the decisions would be made, more than what's necessary, like, because obviously, everything to, classifying something as obscene will always be subjective. And I guess I'm just concerned that there needs to be special wording in the code on how those decisions would be made if the subjectivity will always be in the hand of the school board, rather than in the hands of the students.
Okay. So it's more about how the decision gets made? Okay. Okay. Thank you. Did you have a question for Ms. Thornton?
Do you have suggestions on what would, how you would like as a student to see the decision made?
By the students.
Completely by the students?
Since it's a student-run publication for the students.
Do you have any opinion about the role of the principal or your staff advisor?
Well, yeah, I mean, like I said, that everything is made in coordination with the staff advisor, and I don't think that that has been an issue so far, but that just that if the students-
You want the student voice to be heard?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I ask you just one quick more question? Has anything been deleted from your paper so far?
No, because these guidelines haven't been-
Okay. I just wondered, because, no, I know, I'm just wondering if that has been an issue already? No, no, okay.
No, because our paper does not go to review by the principal or anyone before it's printed currently.
I assume your faculty advisor reviews it?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Herron?
Yeah. I'm just curious. You point out a good one. You know, the sentence you identified relates to 1 through 8. If it doesn't fall into 1 through 8, it can't just arbitrarily be canceled. And you mentioned under 1, expression that is obscene. For our council, is there a definition of what's obscene?
Well, the short answer is yes. The courts have been wrestling with that for many years. It's not written down like the first commandment. But 48907 refers to obscenity. What that means is legal obscenity. The cases that interpret that discuss obscenity, and there are discussions of what that means, you know, in the law. Quite frankly, I don't think it was ever satisfactorily addressed in the, maybe in the 1960s. Supreme Court Justice Potter Stewart, which I'm sure you all remember, in writing a decision about whether something was obscene or not, says, "I know it when I see it." So I think many courts believe they know what it means, but there is no single test that's articulated for it. Another option is-
How is a school principal and a journalism advisor going to define that?
Well, first of all, if a school advisor was to put the lid down and to say, "I think this is obscene," and, you know, without going into detail, I'm sure we could all come up with some lurid example, and the students objected to that, then, before any censorship could occur, and this is per a recommendation that I read somewhere, the district would need to review that with legal counsel to make sure that it fell within the parameters of the legal definition of obscenity. And then, if there was still a determination that the material should be excluded, there's a one-way appeal that would come up all the way to your board. Now, it's not an appeal of a decision to allow. The way that this is written is only if the student publication is rejected by the advisor, and even the district's lawyer says, "No, that's legally obscene." They can still come to the board for relief, not the other way around. There are, and the last comment would be, and I think Ms. Deacon is aware of this, there are some variety of different standards relating to student press and student free press activities, and some of them purport to contain a definition of obscenity. And I haven't studied that enough to know whether that might suffice, but I'm a little leery of coming up with some definition without knowing how it fits within a very extensive body of legal case law.
Just one question. On the article, I think I read the article you're talking about, where would that have fallen in 1 through 8? What would grounds have been to bar that or not let it be published?
Are you talking about the article that was published?
Yes.
In my opinion, it would not have been barred.
That's what I was wondering. It didn't fall into 1 through 8, I can see.
That article, in my opinion, did not cross any of the eight lines.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Deacon?
The students probably don't know this. In my former life, I was a college newspaper advisor, and I spent a lot of my time trying to thwart administrative censorship of the paper. So I know a lot about college journalism advising, high school is a little bit different. But I actually have a number of things that I would eliminate from this policy, and I, since it's 10:15 tonight, I think maybe this is a first draft, and I'm happy to provide more information that, you may be familiar with the Student Press Law Center. It's in DC, and it's a national organization that advises students about their journalism rights. And they actually have online a publication code that they make available to school districts. And I think that might be an interesting place for us to start. I personally would eliminate the prior restraint piece from this policy. I also would actually eliminate numbers four through eight in this policy as well. It seems to me that when we start talking about harassment and things like that, the question becomes, who interprets what that is? And unless you are trained in journalism or the law, you may not know, and so you may get a lot of people making lay decisions that don't really understand the way it works. One of the cases that I think Mr. Price cited, or at least I know, I had some discussion with him about, was the Nevada case, which involved a high school. And there was a, an editorial that ran in that paper that was an immigrant bashing editorial, and the school district or the principal decided to exercise prior restraint and tried, and pulled the newspaper from publication. Well, you know what? The school district lost, and the students won in that case. And so I think there's a lot of precedent to support students having the right to develop their own paper. And I personally don't think the advisor should be determining content, because I think pedagogically, that's pretty unsupportable. I mean, it's a student work, it's not the advisor's work, and we don't want the advisor going in and changing all what may be perceived as mistakes. It's kind of like grading an exam before you turn it in and then giving you the grade afterwards. I mean, a newspaper is like an exam, in a way. I do think it might be helpful to add in this policy the fact that the district should furnish to administrators and to journalism advisors the various codes of conduct and ethics that have been developed by various organizations. The Student Press Law Center has one, the, there's a High School Student Journalism Association that has one. Perhaps you already share that with your students, but I think it would be good for administrators to have that as well, that really lays out, you know, the rules of journalism and the tenets of that. So I don't know where we want to go tonight, but I do know that I have a lot of things that I would want to see removed from this.
Thank you. Ms. Parker?
I have found this whole situation really fascinating, and I've learned so much in the past month, doing a lot of self-research around these issues, and then, of course, reading The Forge and thinking about what it means for our other district newspapers. I was struck by the difference between freedom of speech and poor judgment, and the fact that students can exercise poor judgment, faculty advisors can exercise poor judgment, and so can administrators. And what I appreciate about this policy coming forward is that it's as much to help administrators understand what the rights of students are, as it is for students and faculty advisors to understand what their rights and what the limitations are. So I really appreciate that this is coming forward. I think it's long overdue. What I would say about this, this language that's in front of us right now, I actually, I would be a little more concerned about 4 through 8 in the first section going out, particularly because some of those would expose us, I think, to lawsuits from students that were being sexually harassed or intimidated, et cetera. So I would be more concerned about that going out. In the journalism and staff advisor section, I do have a number of questions about the, how that fits in with the actual role of a staff advisor in terms of things like appointing and removing students from staff positions and so forth. I also really feel that it's important to add the Ed Code, here's an addition for you, Mr. Price, to add the Ed Code language on the protection that faculty advisors have, because I don't want it to be the case where administrators don't understand the protection that teachers have if they're in that position. So I would ask that that be added. Prior restraint, it's so hard, because if, if you're trying to close the door after, you know, the horse is bolted, I don't know, you know, it just, it puts everybody in a very difficult position. I would love to see a situation where there's a educational conversation going on around why things, you know, should go in, and maybe what the consequences are if things go in. I don't want to think of that as prior restraint, but I also don't want to have a situation where something that's illegal has been printed in the paper, and then have to go back and try to fix that. So it's, I can see that it's a bit of a difficult situation, so I look forward to seeing what the code is that Mrs. Deacon has, because maybe that helps clarify things. So.
Before we move on, Ms. Thornton, you don't have to remain standing there. I'm sorry. You're free to sit down. Thank you very much. Other comments from board members? Ms. Limon?
The only thing I actually, I found very useful, the code of ethics that was provided to us. I almost found that more useful than some of what I was reading, and I wonder if- if we could either adopt someone's code of ethic or have our students and our, create a code of ethic, because there were a lot of aspects that I found personally very useful. So I would love to see something like that.
Mr. Heron?
Just under prior restraint, I think maybe the word prior, maybe restraint is a red flag, so maybe there's another word. But in that paragraph, it talks about, it puts the journalism advisor and the school principal, it assumes they're both on the same wavelength in two paragraphs. If those two agree, well, to me, that puts the principal at the same level of a staff person, which I don't think is correct, because what if they don't agree? And then, what, it doesn't say what happens then. So I don't think you can have those two positions equal, so I think that needs to be changed.
I just want to say, I think most conflicts between school officials and student publications really aren't over obscenity. I think that's very rare, because I think most advisors talk to their students, and their students understand. I mean, they're trying to learn what professional standards are, and they know the mainstream press does not necessarily do that. I think most are perception battles over what administrators might think hurts a school in terms of content in a newspaper. And there's a famous Hazelwood case where a principal pulled a story about teen pregnancy, because he thought that would be bad for students to know about, and it maybe invaded someone's privacy. And actually, that case stood, but there's since been a number of cases that have backed away from that. And as Mr. Price mentioned, California has the most liberal press protection laws in the country. So I will make, and maybe not right now, but really make the case that I think we need to look really carefully at this, because I don't, prior restraint is not something, except in the exceptions that are listed, obscenity, libel, and incitement. Those are really the only areas that are legally defensible, as far as I'm concerned. I know Mr. Price, and I may differ on some of the others, but those begin to become gray areas where you have to interpret certain things. And I think the courts quite often come down in the favor of press freedom. So I wouldn't want a policy where we're setting ourselves up to do illegal things by being too restrictive. So that's it for now.
Well, I'll just add my two cents, I guess. The, first of all, I want to say, you actually have three Dons on this board. So just remember that. And, but in addition, that part about prior restraint, I wanted to check with you about, or ask you, Ms. Deacon, about that part, because the, we're skipping the first sentence, which says, "Except as set forth below, there shall be no prior restraint of material prepared for official school publications."
Well, I would, I would change that to be, "Except as set forth above," and I would eliminate everything after that. So that would take us back to obscenity, libel, and incitement, which is 1 through 3. And profanity, I actually, it feels really weird to defend profanity, but I actually don't think we should, we should legislate against that either, because I, there are times when journalistically, you might want to do that. And that goes for racial epithets, too, even though you may hate those words. Sometimes, it's part of the news, and so I would feel very odd saying you can't use a certain word in a school newspaper.
Well, I'm inclined to agree with you on that one. Five, six, and seven, maybe eight, depending on, what I see about five and six, really, and seven, is that they're very specific. They're saying "as defined in a particular code or a particular case." So it's not a broad definition. They're identifying a very specific definition. In that regard, I, since those are either case law or education code, I would be inclined to likely agree with that those are appropriate. If they were just, you know, saying constitutes a true threat, and no identification of who determines that or how we determine what that is, but I, and I would imagine that in that particular case, that that is given a very particular definition. So I would be more inclined to want to leave five through eight in, and also because eight includes infringing upon another student's right. And again, under state and federal law. So there's some fairly specific definitions of what that means as well. So I would be more inclined to, to want to include those. I guess, I'm a little bit more, I'm less clear about the aspect of the journalism staff advisor being in our, I mean, that sounds like a job description. It doesn't sound like policy language to me. So that part, I'm a little bit more concerned with. I would like to see us adopt a code of, a code of ethics. The problem with codes of ethics is there's no enforcement. I mean, you kind of, it's kind of voluntary, whether you abide by them or not. And we've, you know, seen that. So-
Well, I was just going to say, we note that they're included in the curriculum. I mean-
Yeah, yeah.
You know, they're part of the teaching curriculum, rather than we personally adopt them as a board.
Yeah. So anyways, I guess I see five through eight as kind of falling under the umbrella of the others. But, but I somewhat agree with you about four, that I don't, I don't know that we need to rule against, I'm also in that situation of, well, I'm not so concerned about defending profanity. There's a place for it. I'm not sure it's the school newspaper, but there is a place for it. So I think we will need to come back to this. This is clearly the first reading, and we'll need to come back and make some, see some revisions, make some additional comments. We can make, we can send any comments that we have to staff as the revisions come forward. We would welcome the student perspective on what language should be deleted, if you think the language should be deleted, or modified in some way, if you think the language should be modified. And you're welcome to email us, to send, to write us letters, whatever you want to, call us, whatever you want to do, to give us your feedback. That would be very useful, to know what kinds of things you're thinking. And that would be, I think, where we're going to go with this. Ms. Parker?
I just want to chime in on the profanity piece, since that's being talked about right now. And I, I really do delineate between age groups on profanity, and see a difference between what might be appropriate at a high school paper versus what'd be appropriate at a college paper and beyond. And at the same time, I could see, for example, the difference between an opinion piece where a student has decided to use profanity throughout just for the heck of it, versus a news, you know, a hard news article where they're quoting somebody, and it would be very appropriate. So my question for Mr. Price, just on the profanity piece, if you included profanity, would it ban quoted profanity? Have to delineate in some way.
Well, I could make the case, I could make the case that it only applies to expressive profanity as opposed to quoted profanity. However, it can be better clarified in the language. I do have a suggestion, if you're, I want you to finish, but if you're looking towards providing some guidance to come back, do you want me to just go through very quickly what I was thinking about bringing back?
Yes, please, Mr. Price.
On the first page, page one of three, and I'm mindful of a general intent to more or less limit the items that are not allowed to those things which are in the statute. So what I'm thinking is, leave one, the definition of obscene is whatever the law makes it. And of course, you can debate this and change it however you want. In number two, I'm thinking of ending number two after the word slanderous. The rest of everything that's there is derived from the LEAB case. And I think if you're going to take a minimalist approach to defining what can, what crosses the line, that can be left out. Number three, I think is probably important. It goes to the insightful type of language, and that comes out of the Nevada case, which is, was mentioned, was a ruling that went against the school district. I can play a little bit with number four in terms of doing away with expressive profanity as opposed to profanity, which is quoted in a secondhand fashion, and you can decide whether or not you wish to keep that. Based on what I'm hearing, I can leave five through eight in, and you can decide that later. I'm going to jump all the way down to prior restraint. There doesn't seem to be a great deal of support expressed in the comments so far for a categorization of what that prior restraint consists of. And going back to Mrs. Deacon's suggestion, where she said something about, "Except as set forth above, there shall be no prior restraint." That really closely parallels the language of 48907, without getting into a lot of specifics. And so taking out the rest of that language.
Mr. Price, can I just suggest that we say in categories one through eight, so that it's clear what we mean by above, since it's-
Yes.
Since in the document, that is not directly above it?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Adding in what I neglected to include from 47908G, which is the protection of the staff member, which, as was pointed out, was incorrectly left out. And then in terms of the journalism staff advisor, I can basically take out one through five and just leave in the first two paragraphs, which is more of a statement of intent. And presumably, take out the appeal section at the very end of this, too. So it's another way of doing it, which is to take out a lot, to flip it back to you, in a way that would allow you to focus on whether or not there are things that are gone that you would like to see put back in.
I would actually leave one and three under the staff advisor, and maybe for two, put something like, include the Society of Professional Journalists Code of Ethics in the journalism curriculum, or something along those lines, in lieu of number two, because I think different advisors select their staff differently. I mean, sometimes the students vote on who the editor in chief is. So I would, I would take two out, leave one and three, but add a new two.
And, Ms. Cordero, just-
Yes, Ms. Parker.
My, my one concern is, of course, now, except as set forth in one through eight, I just want to be sure that if material is pulled because it violates one through eight, that that is done in consultation with district counsel. So I want to be sure that that is somewhere in there.
I think that's a good point. I'll insert that language.
I think that's a very good point, because that guards against an individual administrator just making that decision. There would have to be a legal basis for making it. So I think that's a, an important piece to have. If that were done, if there were a legal basis, or it was determined by the attorney that there were a legal basis, would we, do you think that we would still need to have the appeal process identified, or at least acknowledge that there is an appeal process? Because I would still want the students to have the ability to appeal that decision to the board.
In a way, that's a philosophical question, and it depends on whether the people involved feel like having it be able to go to the board would protect or inhibit their speech rights. I will point out that in the LEAB decision, the court really criticized the district there for not having some sort of a higher review process, understanding that under the law, if there is to be such a review process outside of the student newspaper office itself, it needs to be, I think it says, prompt. So it's really up to you.
I'd like to see, you can maybe pare down if you want to, but I would like to see language identifying that there is the, the opportunity for the decision to be appealed on the part of the students. Now, the district doesn't have the right to appeal that decision.
Correct.
But the students can.
I'll do that.
Okay. Mr. Heron?
Definitely. I mean, I know Mr. Price is a great attorney, but he's not elected to do this, you know, so he would be the last person to make that final decision.
Well, I just let it all in, Mr. Heron, so.
He's a child of the 60s, remember. Okay, so do we have any additional comments that we want to make on this? Okay.
No, and I was just going to say, well, I wanted to be clear about what the board's direction is, but Mr. Price just led us through that.
Okay, great.
I think that'll-
All right. Well, once again, thank you to the students and the staff, and parents or public, for coming and giving us your, your input on this important decision that we're making. And again, if you have any additional comments you want to make to us, please feel free to email us, to call us, or to send us letters, communicate with us, however you feel appropriate, and we would like to have your feedback. So thank you, and we will move on to the next item now.
This next item should be passed. Shall we bring the last three back to, okay?
Okay, board members, you probably won't be heartbroken to hear this. I think we are going to move items five.
Let me ask about F5.
Oh, okay.
Do, we may want to ask Mr. Smith whether he feels that this is necessary-
Okay.
...to handle right now. It won't be. I already sent an email back to them.
Okay, so-
Okay.
Miss Shetey, I apologize for your having to stay this late, but we will likely bring F5, F6, and F7 back to a later agenda. We will, we will conclude with F4, and that is our first reading of the revisions to administrative regulation and exhibit 1312.4 Williams Uniform, excuse me, Uniform Complaint Procedures.
And Robyn Swasky.
Yes, I will do this. Mr. Sumter could not be here this evening. This is pretty straightforward, and the page that describes the reason that it's, it is a mandated regulation, as you know, the Williams Uniform Complaint Procedures. Our old policy was from 2008, and you can see the specific, you probably found it in there where the additions were added, as well as on the exhibit, which is the complaint piece. So if you have any questions?
Does anybody have any questions on the side? Ms. Lamone?
Page three, it doesn't state it, but I'm going to guess that the form would be available in both Spanish and English. Is it from David's?
Uh, let's see. Absolutely, they are in English and Spanish, and we can add that in. On page three, you're saying, down here on the forms and notices-
Right, it's, yes.
Available at each school. You want to be specific- You want to be specific in Spanish and English, or English and Spanish? Okay, it's fine.
Any other comments or questions?
Okay, this was our first reading, so I don't know if we want to, I don't know if we want to act on this, but it doesn't seem particularly controversial. We can act on a conference agenda item if we would like to.
I have no problem at all with getting this taken care of. I'm going to move that we go ahead and approve the revisions to AR and Exhibit 1312.4, the Williams Uniform Complaint Procedures. Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries five zero. So one last thing that has to come back.
Thank you.
Yes, we won't have to print it up again. Okay, so we have nothing to return to the consent agenda for, because we took care of five and six already. Coming events, we have a special board meeting on Tuesday, April 5th, at 5:30. Our next regular board meeting is on Tuesday, April 12th, at 6:30. Any other coming events that we need to comment on? Nope?
I will be forwarding something, actually, to the district. There is a national webcast conference taking place on Hispanic education that's happening on Monday, and I think it'd be good for folks to know. This Monday, it's a national, it's being aired in Spanish and English, and anyone who wants to participate in the web conference can actually log into a website, and I think the president will actually be chiming in as well.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Lamone. Okay. Future agenda items, I think we've just added three that we have to bring back. I think our future agendas are pretty full. So that brings us to adjournment.